Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. We have some meeting and public comment announcements. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. In our first order of business is rule call. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Charland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kale Smith. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Amy Zase.
I'm mostly prepared here. Okay, thank you for hearing me today. My name's Amy Zase. I live in the Beachview neighborhood and I'm a new homeowner. I'm here today to talk about Councilman Charland's proposal, which I am in favor of. So I personally am speaking from my experiences largely being a renter until this year. And inclusionary zoning, while a laudable goal is in mind, which is to provide affordable housing, I don't think that our policy, our current policy achieves that goal. For one, it stifles new construction and also it is paid for largely by the renting class. Not just the new tenants in the buildings where IZ is mandated, but also by stifling new construction increases rents overall. I do feel as a homeowner, like I said, that I would like to also contribute to the affordable housing in our city. I think that it is an important goal and that if our focus is providing deep affordability, then it needs to be paid for by all the taxpayers of our city. And I would love to contribute myself as well. So I look forward to the discussions around this policy. I think that there's still a lot of details to be worked out, but I appreciate Charland, Councilman Charland, for bringing this proposal and starting this conversation, which I think is really important. So I'll just leave it at that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Billings.
My name is Jack Billings. I live in Squirrel Hill in Councilperson Erica Strasburgers' district. I am the co-author with David Vatz of the report "The Effects of Inclusionary Zoning on New Housing Construction in Pittsburgh," released by Pro-Housing Pittsburgh two weeks ago. We found that because of IZ, Lawrenceville built roughly 300 fewer units in buildings of 20 units or more than it would have had IZ not been in place. In this report, we used a difference-in-difference methodology to identify what effect the existing IZ legislation has on new construction. Difference-in-difference identifies causal effect by comparing a treatment group before and after a policy change with a control group before and after the policy change. Specifically, we compared the total number of completed units in Lawrenceville from 2012 to 2019, when IZ went into effect, and then from 2019 to the present day against the total number of completed units in our two control neighborhoods, the Strip District and South Side Flats, in the same two time periods. There were two major zoning changes that happened in Lawrenceville since 2012 that could affect housing construction. The first in 2016 was the introduction of the RIV zoning district. The second in 2019 was the introduction of the IZ mandate. To isolate the effect of the IZ mandate, we compared Lawrenceville against two neighborhoods, South Side Flats and the Strip District, that also have extensive RIV zoning but do not have IZ. In the pre-period from 2012 to 2019, all three neighborhoods had similar levels of construction for buildings of 20 units or more. In the post-period from 2019 to today, the Strip District and the South Side Flats have seen their construction increase while Lawrenceville's has decreased. We focus on completions because people cannot live in blueprints or proposals. They have to live in finished buildings. And sometimes permitted or entitled projects don't end up getting built. By comparing across neighborhoods with similar pre-2019 construction patterns, zoning and land use, we control for land availability, supply chain issues, price volatility, the layering of existing subsidies and changes to them over time, and the impact of high interest rates. If we extrapolate from Mass. 2023, "The Effect of New Market Rate Construction on Low-Income Housing Market," published in the Journal of Urban Economics, the loss of these 300 units in Lawrenceville that would have been built if not for IZ means that approximately 50 to 120 homes in Lawrenceville today are not affordable when without IZ they still would be affordable. So even taking into account the 35 affordable units that IZ has created in Lawrenceville, overall, IZ has resulted in a net loss of somewhere between 15 and 85 affordable homes in Lawrenceville. If we want affordable housing in Pittsburgh, we need to build abundant housing in Pittsburgh. And if we want to use IZ as a mechanism to get there, we need to make sure it does not constrain the housing supply. That means at the very least, IZ should be voluntary, not mandatory, and IZ units need to be funded by the city. I'm happy to answer any questions you or your staffs may have about the report, the analysis, the data, or anything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Hello. Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Emily Sawyer and I live in the Manchester neighborhood. I am speaking today to ask the city of Pittsburgh to return the portion of our children's school tax dollars that were diverted to the city while it was in Act 47. The city was released from its distressed municipality designation in 2018. The city has continued for the intervening six years to receive this diverted school earned income tax revenue while the offset the state was supposed to provide has not kept up with the actual revenue diverted away from the school district. This amounted to almost $23 million in 2023 and around $25 million in 2024 worth of education tax dollars that our district did not have to invest in the education of our city's children. It's time for the city to put this right. That can mean returning the diverted money at the city level and/or going to the state to correct the diversion through legislation, since the diversion is no longer appropriate. This is our kids' education money. PPS is struggling, considering closing schools, cutting summer programming, and dealing with not having enough staff to meet student need. And the city should not be relying on this money as part of the solution to its own struggles. I would also like to mention, as a very new resident of Manchester who has been trying to mostly listen and learn regarding the Esplanade Development Project, that I think it is fair to say that the community engagement around this project has been uneven at best and possibly you might even call it professionalized. It seems to me, from my experience talking to neighbors, that many folks still have unanswered questions about the impacts of the development on the neighborhood, any benefits that will accrue to the longtime neighborhood residents who have been overlooked by the city for many decades and are already struggling with the forces of gentrification, and what protections will be in place for these longtime residents so they don't get taxed out of their homes. A measly percentage of affordable units is not good enough, and the homestead exemption isn't large enough to meet this need. There need to be strong protections for owners and renters, as well as a right-of-return clause for folks who have already been pushed out. Again, I am new and admittedly could be considered part of the problem, but I love Manchester for what it is, not what it could be, and I think it is my responsibility to add my voice to my neighbors' voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Casey Kaprinsky.
My name is Casey Kaprinsky. I live in Central Oakland, represented by Councilman Bob Charland, and I am here today to speak in favor of his proposal concerning inclusionary zoning. As a young person just starting my professional career, it can be hard for me and others in similar situations to afford living in the city. I am a renter, so a lot of these housing policy ideas floating around would directly affect me. I have high hopes for the future of Pittsburgh. However, we continue to face a critical housing crisis that needs to be addressed if many of us want to be able to afford living in the city down the line. In Pittsburgh, we need housing that is both abundant and affordable. Current inclusionary zoning mandates serve to achieve neither, but rather to prevent housing from being developed in the first place by putting up barriers. We've seen this in Lawrenceville, where development has slowed compared to similar neighborhoods since the inclusionary zoning mandate was introduced in 2019. Yet, inclusionary zoning does not have to be a bad thing. My uncle, for example, who would otherwise not be able to afford a home at all, lives in an affordable unit thanks to these sorts of policies. It can do good when implemented effectively. The solution for this is to fully fund inclusionary zoning and implement it through a voluntary program. Fully funding prevents creating an additional financial burden for developing housing that tends to be passed onto tenants through higher rent, if the housing even gets built in the first place. Then, the voluntary aspect makes it so neighborhoods are empowered to make the decision for their community that best fits their unique needs. This is what Councilman Charland's Ordinance 1287 serves to do, and this is why I firmly support it and you should too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Gray.
My name is Elizabeth Gray and I'm a resident of the South Side. And I'm speaking today on behalf of Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, where I'm employed as community liaison. Council will have the opportunity at today's meeting to take action on the enhanced inclusionary zoning bill introduced two weeks ago by Councilperson Charland. Councilperson Charland has assured us he introduced this bill in a good faith effort to open dialogue about the purpose and usefulness of the inclusionary zoning overlay. In advance of the council's consideration of any recommendation, the overlay be extended to cover all the city of Pittsburgh. OPDC supports robust public dialogue and encourages public participation in planning conversations. Public dialogue through the two-and-a-half-year Oakland Plan process made it possible for the inclusionary zoning to be implemented in Oakland in 2022. And as a result, there are currently projects in the pipeline that will create more than 350 new units of housing in Oakland, including 37 affordable rental units. And there are more on the way. Inclusionary zoning is working in Oakland, and we want to keep it working. We believe the enhanced inclusionary zoning bill is not the best tool to encourage constructive dialogue about IZ. And while it is on the table, it jeopardizes current and future projects in the neighborhoods where IZ is currently in place, interjecting uncertainty where it's wanted the least. There's definitely an appetite on council to have a meaningful discussion about the best use of IZ to support the development of affordable as well as market rate housing units in Pittsburgh. But this bill is confusing and chaotic, and you will spend more time disagreeing about what it means than you'll be able to spend talking about the issues that your constituents really care about. We ask that you work together to develop a more coherent set of proposals worthy of the public's time and attention. Please vote down the motion to refer this bill to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Vatz.
Everybody, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Distinguished members of council, my name is David Vatz and I'm here today on behalf of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh to encourage you to support housing affordability policies that will contribute to housing affordability in our region. Unfortunately, the inclusionary zoning policy that has been in place since 2019 in Pittsburgh has not done that, and the proposal by the mayor that is currently routing through Planning Commission shares many of the same flaws. Key among those flaws is both a simple fix and a very complicated problem: funding the mandate. I was very happy last week to hear a vigorous debate at council about whether we can and whether we should fund the creation of affordable housing within the IZ program. We have heard many different opinions from members of council and administration, ranging from funding being a "developer giveaway" to members sharing their legitimate concerns that the city cannot afford to fund this important priority. I am here to tell you one thing: You cannot mandate affordability if you cannot pay for affordability. Our current IZ mandate is backed up by funding that does not cover the financing gap on many projects. While a few projects have still gone forward under this, we have seen a cooling effect in the neighborhoods where it has been implemented. Our study shows that Lawrenceville has seen a decrease in housing production since IZ was implemented, whereas other neighborhoods such as the South Side and Strip District without the IZ mandate have seen significant increases in housing production. If we implement IZ citywide without adequate funding to cover the financial gaps that it creates, we will see this negative effect citywide. This is particularly concerning as we are already building at extremely low rates in Pittsburgh as compared with our peer cities, and this has the potential to drop our housing production even lower. Importantly, lower housing production will lead to higher rents for all renters, including our only renter on city council, Councilman Charland. People who deny that IZ has lowered housing production and has the potential to do so across the city are simply ignoring the evidence right in front of us. Just yesterday, there was an article about a planned townhome development in Lawrenceville that was originally planned at 30 homes and is now planned at 19 homes, just below the IZ requirement to avoid the mandate. These types of things will quietly happen right before our eyes if we do not act. I would encourage you to collaborate on Councilman Charland's proposal, who has put forth a plan that requires funding for IZ. I think there's significant discussion that needs to happen on how it's paid for and the trade-offs associated with that, but these are the discussions that council must be having. Council shouldn't wait for the mayor's proposal to come to your table, but rather should work to immediately start crafting a reasonable and logical plan, one that is adequately funded, one that provides incentives commensurate with the mandate, and one that speeds projects to ground so they will actually get built. Councilman Charland's bill provides the foundation for this, and while it may be imperfect, with collaboration from the rest of council, it will generate actual affordability in Pittsburgh. The current IZ approach and the mayor's proposal will not do that.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Christopher Beam.
My name is Christopher Beam. I'm a resident of Bloomfield. I've testified before you over 10 times this past year in support of bills that would allow cash loans to be legal to build again, in support of bridge housing conversion projects, new apartment buildings, new mixed-use developments, and so much more. As I communicated then, I will reiterate right now: Pittsburgh is in the midst of a housing crisis due to decades of underbuilding housing. As a region, we were able to avoid the worst of the housing affordability problem for several decades as families left the area for more prosperous metros. But in just the last decade, the number of households living in Pittsburgh has started to grow, even while population shrank, putting pressure on the existing housing stock and making home prices start to skyrocket. Since I bought my house in Bloomfield in 2018, home prices have appreciated by well over 40%, and rents have seen similar increases. All the while, incomes have only been modestly rising. However, I am sheltered from this housing affordability crisis due to my owning of my home. I am urging you to support utilizing city taxes to build affordable housing for below 100% AMI households. I and most other homeowners households are not doing our part to provide for our low-income neighbors since our properties do not get reassessed regularly by the county, and we only pay detransfer taxes to the Housing Opportunity Fund when property is bought or sold. Inclusionary zoning was proposed as a potential tool to help solve the housing affordability crisis by encouraging mixed-income housing developments, which is a laudable goal. I share the sentiment of keeping neighborhoods integrated with mixed-income housing alongside newer, more expensive housing. But if our policies hinder the production of new rental or owner housing units from being produced, we only harm our median and below median income renting neighbors by subjecting them to higher rents due to fewer homes getting built. If we as a city value mixed-income housing like we say we do, then we should back that value up with money to help build these housing units that we value. I and many other homeowners would support an increase in property taxes if the raised funds meant to build mixed-income housing for our fellow neighbors. For that reason, I urge you to consider supporting Ordinance 1284 that would help fund more affordable housing in Pittsburgh. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vlad Kaplan.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Hi, I'm Vlad Kaplan. I'm a homeowner in East Liberty, and I wanted to comment in support of Councilman Charland's inclusionary zoning proposal. Unfunded inclusionary zoning doesn't work. It didn't produce significant results here in Pittsburgh. In fact, it likely diminished the total number of homes built in Lawrenceville. Portland came to the same conclusion about their unfunded IZ program and changed it to a funded one. And then there was a study that showed that IZ increased housing prices in Boston and San Francisco. I asked that city council not take any steps that make it harder to build housing in the city. It's already quite hard. I also very much agree with previous commentators Chris and Amy and their comments concerning the fact that unfunded IZ is paid for by the renting class rather than homeowners. This is simply unfair and aggressive, and we all need to pitch in, and I say that as a homeowner myself. And I'd add, with respect to Councilman Charland's currently proposed bill, I would love to see the 90-day ZBA and Planning Commission approval incentives be upgraded to 30 days to make it even more enticing to build affordable units. So I'm broadly in support of this bill. Thank you for your time. Go Pittsburgh! Go Pens!
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ikahana Halmaquina.
My title is Chief Ikahana Halmaquina. I am the Grand Isa of the Ayroha Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. Over the past few years, you have heard many speeches, not only from myself, but from other men, women, and even children, from our nation and beyond. We have reminded you of the oath that you have taken to support, protect, and defend the Constitution, specifically Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, which states, "And excluding Indians, not Hacks." You have heard how we have survived the Indian Removal Act of 1830 and the devastation that other acts such as the 1862 Homestead Act and even the Gaustran of Discovery, which unlawfully gave away hundreds and hundreds of acres of land. These inequities still exist today, and we need meaningful steps to address such egregious, nefarious, ill-conceived policies that have left us marginalized in our own lands. The denial of these basic rights is a direct violation of the oath that you took as leaders of this city, as councilmen and women. It is up to you and is incumbent upon you to ensure that our rights are protected according to your oath, according to your own Home Rule Charter. You must take these meaningful acts, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. It's something that city council signed on to April 6th of 2011. To take these meaningful steps, to make this a city for all, not for some, you must choose how you will honor your oath, how you will move forward, to take these meaningful steps to address all of these ill-conceived policies and to make it a place where we can enjoy our liberties and exercise our pursuit of happiness. It is unlawful to deny one such a thing. It is incumbent upon you to address and redress these historical injustices, to reconcile them, to redress them. The eyes of the world are watching. I implore you to be honorable in all that you do. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Makiru Amun. I can hear you. Can you please state your name?
Makiru Amun.
Thank you.
I'm an Aboriginal American, and I'm in support of the Indigenous people of America. I'd just like to put on emphasis with Ikahana, which she just spoke on, that to acknowledge the Constitution and your oath of office. And that's it. So thank you very much and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sheri Winston. Please proceed.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Sheri Winston, and I'm calling from the Regent Square area. I'm calling in today to express my concern for the Indigenous people in this region, mainly Chief Ikahana, who has been a beacon of light upon our community through the great servant. I support your legislation being proposed through the Act Act, and I feel as though protecting these basic human rights for their community is essential and essential for their future. I appreciate you guys taking your time today and taking what we're saying into consideration. Thank you, and I will get going.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Apayala. Okay, then we will move on to those who would like to speak or in the audience. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
I live in the Hill District, Katyville, Irving. I have this sign that I brought, and it's when Bush, I mean not Bush, when Trump came here to the PPG Arena, you know I live at the top of the hill, so I felt if he come in my neighborhood, he need to know how I felt and some of the people felt about him. This sign that I wrote, and I'll read it so you can understand it, it says, this is in Pittsburgh, PA, this is in the Hill District, the Lower Hill, and this is Pittsburgh 15219. It says, "Our goal is to ask these questions and to protect the women around the world. Do you promise not to use your little hands to pull our female parts? Donald, we don't like it. Donald, that hurts. You said you pull, they like it. We say, keep your little hands to yourself and keep the little hands to yourself, not lest the woman ask you to pull. Pull her private parts." Now, you had people going across, my daughter was upset, "Mommy, don't go down there." You know what they did with that black man when Donald said, "Get him out of here," and they punched the man as he was leaving. I said, "I ain't no fool. I know to stand across the street. I know not to go up in there." Now, you had some of the people walking, and you had one, he was real mad. He ran, he said, "But you don't know what Donald did." Well, my grandbaby was with me, so I wouldn't say, I know he pulled so-and-so. I didn't say anything. But then you had two men from Canada, they took and they talked to me, and they were saying, they agreed. And then, how did I feel about Donald? Well, I have a phone, and my grandbaby taped that thing, but the phone don't work too good. But these were two white men that agreed with me, and I felt that I did this because if he can come in my neighborhood, he need to know what we people, we females, are thinking about him. Because I really don't really understand how it happened, but God works in mysterious ways, so maybe something good will come out. I don't see how. When you have this man, the 4P president, I call him pulling pervert, because they talked about the Russian model said that they were, you know, they had naked, and he's walking through. They said he was weird and queer. That's what the young white people were saying. That's what the young white people were saying about him. I say that we're in a dangerous situation now, because we can have where, we can have our council people make the decision that the police is supposed to come to everybody's neighborhood, but make the decision, no, we'll put him with Lawrenceville. We have to take two buses to get to Lawrenceville. These are the poor black people to get to Lawrenceville, but you can take one to come here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Special Agent Sunshine. Let me pray. Dear God, thank you for giving me everything I need to get through my struggles. Please give me wisdom and patience during hard times. The wisdom of the prudent, Proverbs 14:8 says, "Is to give thought to their ways, but the folly of fools is deception." Women and children are being targeted for being independent, single, celibate, educated, and choosing not to be controlled by men with money. We're choosing ourselves and God over oppression. Proverbs 28:3 says, "A ruler who oppresses the poor is like a driving rain that leaves no crops." Lavelle, when Kelly Bryce came here last summer, she didn't perform. Why? She wasn't paid. You know all about it. Why she wasn't paid? What y'all do with their money? Y'all had her on the roster. She didn't perform. I came here and performed, and was threatened that you've been tolerant of our public comments. I've been tolerant of you oppressing me. So now, I'm gonna pray and curse the bloodlines of every voodoo practitioner, corrupt government official, oppressor, narcissist, stalker, and hater in this world to poverty in Jesus' name. The Lord will bring sickness and death to those who hate, who have hate and malice in their hearts by stopping it from beating. Don't believe it, just watch. Proverbs 28:22 says, "The Stinky are eager to get rich and are unaware that poverty awaits them." Whoever thinks I belong to them, take it up with the Lord. That's who I belong to. In Jesus' name, I will continue to pray for him to bring thunder and lightning to anybody oppressing me, stalking me, and trying to keep me from living my life in peace. I will always choose peace over oppression. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is Finance and Law Committee, and we have new papers, 1300.
Bill 1300, Resolution Authorizing 52 Open and Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis As Required Related to Various Professional Services As Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $1,500 annually for a three-year term and providing for funding of the costs thereof.
Second.
Discussion. Councilwoman Kail Smith. There is no list in the legislation. Would you like to call someone to the table?
Your mic's off. It might be a good thing.
Good morning.
Joshua Lamondi, Senior Sourcing Specialist, Office of Management and Budget. What's the exact question you'd like to know?
I just wondered if you have a list of who the vendors might be.
The vendors?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So they are on the fiscal impact statement. They are Allegheny Global Environmental, Diapolonia, Bucut Horn, Pachak MTR, HF Lens, H.W. Lochner, MS Consultants, Kaluna Consulting, that's a new name for us, Michael Baker International, and STV. So 10 in total for 50-some odd contracts. This is the first batch of them for this round of ITQs. We will be coming before you all in January for an amendment to both Phase One, which is what I was here for several months ago, as well as this, which is Phase Two. So we'll be amending more in the coming year.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1300, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Affirmative recommendation? Bill 1301.
Bill 1301, Resolution Authorizing 52 Open and Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis As Required Related to Various Professional Services As Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually for a three-year term and providing for funding of the costs thereof.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. Just the same question.
These are the smalls. Same vendors. What we're doing is we're awarding both small and medium categories to both of the same vendors in an effort to make the vetting process a lot more simpler and streamlined.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
No, no.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gross. Just handle.
So we've, you know, talked about these professional services agreements before at the table, and I think I always say it's been helpful to break up the giant RFPs that we're doing many years ago, because it helps to fund more local vendors, smaller vendors, the minority women-owned, et cetera, vendors that are, you know, council has been saying for a long time that we want to do better at funding. But shouldn't there be a list somewhere? Shouldn't there be a publicly, it should be a publicly posted list somewhere?
There is on Open Book.
Open Book, thank you. Okay, that's what I was asking. Do we happen to know, and maybe you're not the right person to ask, do we happen to know if Open Book is back up? It was down. It's been down for over a month?
I always suggest to check daily.
It was up at some point.
It's been up and down? But we don't know if it's up right? That's fine, that's totally fine. No, I'm not surprised. But even like kind of back end, the information that isn't, you know, on the website, it is up, thank you. So, but still, even if the, even if the publicly facing website happened to be down, it seems like the information that's, you know, being generated onto that webpage is, exists somewhere so that it's there, so.
Be in here.
Yeah, maybe it should be in here. So I just, it's just kind of random thoughts, because I think, again, this is like a really fruitful and interesting area, but we also want to maintain the transparency so that we can and the public can see what progress we're making, if we're making the efforts towards that goal. So you don't really need to respond.
I have a response for you if you'd like to hear it. I actually believe that all of this is also publicly available on our bid board on Open Gov.
Oh, so it's another website.
Correct. We have two websites. So Open Book is kind of maintained by the Controller's Office and the folks downstairs. Open Gov is our procurement platform that everyone in the city is able to view. You view like the open solicitations, the bid board itself, as well as all of the contracts that are coming up in terms of expiration and whatnot. So you should be able to go in there, view the contracts that are active, and see which of these vendors have which corresponding contract.
I have looked it up in Gov. I didn't realize that the active contracts that were already awarded were viewable.
Yes, so for not all professional services are on there. So I'm not going to get into that whole split, that hair, but as terms, in terms of ITQ contracts, these professional services, they're on there.
Interesting. Okay, so it's helpful. Thank you, appreciate it. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin.
Yes, thank you. You know, I think I've learned a lot about the ITQ process as this year has progressed. I think I was much less comfortable with it the last time that you came to the table, having gone through the development delays that happened with not having a traffic engineer or not having someone to sign off on our traffic permits, which halted construction for lots of our projects because we, that contract ran out, we didn't have an ITQ for them. I think I've understand, understood much better how this process is supposed to work for services that, that we know we're going to need, but maybe don't have a project associated for, you know, right now, but in kind of an emergency, or not even emergency, but a standard procedure.
Sure.
Using these in the future. I do want to know, though, what, what process do, I know we put out a proposal for people to become someone that we have an ITQ with. How does that work? Like, what are we looking for?
Sure. So we put out, it's an open-end proposal, it is an open application that is open up until the year of the expiration. So anyone can apply at any time, up until the year of expiration for these. I believe it's like 2027. We have, we spell out the exact evaluation criteria, much like we would a standard RFP. In this case, it's basically, it's the same as the RFP, really, where it's just professional qualifications, qualifications of team, and the good faith effort that is, goes into any, really any RFP. Cost proposal's not really part of it, because of course, in theory, we don't know the cost proposal until the job comes up.
Sure.
For these specifically, we develop a selection committee of Public Works as well as DOMI representatives, some other various representatives as time comes and passes. But for these specifically, we have DOMI and Public Works on it, and we convene, I would say, we're working on how often we pull these proposals down, but we come in about quarterly right now, review all the proposals that have come in, and then we vet them and decide what categories they're appropriate for, what they're vetted for, what they've demonstrated their qualifications for, and we kind of do it on a pass/fail basis per size and per category.
Okay. Well, that's helpful to note. The traffic engineer, or the, I don't believe it was a traffic engineer, it was someone that could approve our traffic studies. Is that in the small category or, sorry, the medium or the large category?
No such thing as a large. It's smalls and mediums. Larges would be what's considered an RFP. We don't have a large category. It would not, oh, I see, okay. Small and medium, my apologies. So the ones we're actually on right now are the smalls, I believe. Yep. The traffic engineers would be under both the smalls and the mediums. And what happens there, sorry, let me gather my thoughts here for a second.
Sure. I apologize, I don't mean to.
No, 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 it's not you at all, sir. Put you on the spot there.
I was very concerned with when, you know, all construction was halted that didn't have this stamp earlier this year and how we let that lapse.
Sure.
So I want to make sure that we don't end up in that situation again, you know, and how that contract came to be closed when we should, we should know that the contract's expiring, right?
Right. This is a, my best response for you is this is a, this is a new process that we went through for this evaluation, for this round of ITQs. Based on the feedback from council, as well as the feedback from the end-user departments, we looked at how we evaluate these proposals, and it became a working group of determining what the best way to evaluate these proposals was on, and because of that, it turned into this, this back and forth of kicking the ball where we did lap some time. And so it was, it was, it was due to just figuring out how we're going to evaluate these ITQs on the path moving forward. It was, it was a new, it was, we redrafted the policy in terms of ITQ evaluation and how we pass and fail these folks. So it was really just kind of an internal error in terms of getting new people on board and whatnot. And when, when cases did come up, when there was a lapse, like you said, we did try to, you know, we were trying to extend the contracts just for this one time, just to make sure that the services were getting done while proactively taking care of this on the front end.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, those, the problem that I have is those lapses.
Yeah, yeah.
They, you know, they cost people money.
I hear you.
And that money gets passed on to the housing market and therefore makes housing more unaffordable, unaffordable because of that, you know, three months lapse or four months lapse that happened this summer. So I want to make sure that we don't end up in that situation again. Let me ask another question, though. So we're authorizing 750,000, yeah, 750,000 for this small portion. Is that, we're saying that this is the amount of money that the small vendors can use. Once they've used that, that small, that 750,000, then you have to come back to us and ask for more money, is that correct?
No, they're pretty much capped for the year. It's just if you.
Then we're done doing small ITQs for the year.
For that vendor. For that vendor. So each vendor.
Each vendor can get.
Has a 750.
I understand. Okay.
So if, for example, you know, we use Michael Baker for all 750,000 dollars, we would just simply have to move on.
To the next vendor.
To another vendor.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Scrolling down too far. Of Bill, for the record, of Bill 1301, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you very much. That moves us on to invoices. Do we have a motion on invoices? Discussion. I do have one note from our Assistant Budget Director. There are two invoices from the Bureau of Police for core business technologies that total over $5,000 together, but they are for separate purchases. One's for software renewal, while the other is for routers and equipment. Further discussion on invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Invoices are approved. That moves us on to interdepartmental transfers. Do we have a motion?
To move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of interdepartmental transfers, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? They are approved. Moves us on to P-cards. Do we have a motion on P-cards?
To move.
Second.
Discussion. We do have a couple of P-cards that were paid through PayPal. First is for IMP for tickets, and the second is for, from the mayor's office for catering. We have receipt, we have invoices for both. Further discussion on P-cards? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? P-cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Cahill.
New Papers, Bill 1315, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter Into An Agreement or Agreements With Casa San Jose for Services Relating to Universal Representation in Immigration Proceedings for a sum not to exceed $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1315, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
New Papers, Bill 1302, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 322 of 2024 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding From the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the Spring Hill Park Rehabilitation Project." The grant proposal includes an ask of $562,605 to accept the grant, decrease the amount, and authorize necessary expenditures.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1302, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Charlin.
New Papers, Bill 1293, Resolution Amending Resolution 756 of 2023, Providing for the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies for Job Development and Employment Services Necessary to Implement the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program, and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program for Payment of Costs Thereof, Costs Not to Exceed $210,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Director, if you'd like to come up here.
Director, if you'd like to come up here, or whoever you'd like to bring up.
Good morning.
Introduce yourself.
Paula Callerman, Director of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Christopher Barnes, Youth Program Supervisor.
Jim Brunner, Youth Program Supervisor.
Thank you, I just, if you, I think we have three bills here that are on the similar topic here. Can, you talk to us a little about what we're doing with this? What the plan is with this this amount of money?
So I will actually defer to Chris and Jim. They worked on this with Deidre, who unfortunately is unable to be here today.
Yeah, so we have the Neighborhood Employment Centers who represent obviously every district, well, almost every district in the city of Pittsburgh. And we use the money to supplement their existing program and employment programs that they already have. So the money goes to fund them. Did you?
I have to wait for the chair to call me.
You can proceed. We're queuing up the line.
Oh, I got you. Yes, so we give them supplemental money to help their employment programs, and they report back to us, and we have all the numbers of the job seekers, how many people we have, stuff of that nature.
So what what exactly are we paying for with this this money here?
For, well, 35,000 for each Neighborhood Employment Center. There's six of them. And the Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program covers the staff for for activities within the partnership.
And how many people do we we serve through these employment centers?
So last year, because they, their numbers are due January 1st, so we don't have the final numbers for this year.
Okay.
But last year, for reference, there was 2,838 people served.
And and this is, you know, our staff is is helping those folks build resumes and apply for jobs, putting them in, you know, lining them up with the right locations that work for them, is that correct?
Yeah, they engage employers in the, all over the city to create jobs or help the constituents of those, the areas of the Neighborhood Employment Centers to to get jobs. Some of the employers are, have onsite interviews. There's training programs that come in, colleges, universities. So it's not just employment, but a lot of activity surrounding employment and support of employment.
And then we also gather them quarterly to meet together as a network to kind of use one each other as an umbrella. So you have opportunity, they can bounce ideas off each other, and obviously, people could travel for different opportunities.
Off off the six centers?
Yes, yes, we bring them together for a quarterly meeting, and everyone kind of reports on what they've been doing, what they may have coming up, anything that might have been working or not working for them, things of that nature.
And you said it was 2,800 people, is it, did I have that number right? 2,800 roughly, who have gone through this process? How many of them have found jobs? Is it, is it a high number, or is it?
There were 181 folks that got full time, 36 part time.
So there was, they reported 217 total jobs out of that.
So 2,800 processed, and then 217?
Actually had jobs.
Yeah, so I think a lot of that goes into, they take account of numbers of people that come into the job fair, stuff like that.
Okay.
And I think the ones they actually can track are people that are involved with their programming per se. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, I mean, because if we're saying that we're serving
Yeah.
2,800 and only 200 are getting jobs, then 10% of, you know, of of those folks is not not.
Yeah, because the number seems skewed, because Carnegie Library has a almost 1,200 on here.
Okay, gotcha. All right, well, thank you for, you know, maybe sometime next year will be helpful for us to have a full briefing of of how these programs are supposed to work.
Absolutely.
But thank you for.
When you say full briefing?
We'll work with with the director and
Okay.
work with council to, have you explained to council what what all we're we're doing here with your programs? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, I just want to say first of all, I love the employment centers, and I have seen them help a ton of people. Not just in terms of helping with the resumes, but helping employers come in and help people get employed, what they need to, you know, to prepare them for the jobs that they have available. But also, they do a lot with people with disabilities, a lot of young people. There's all sorts of things they offer, depends on the employment center. But my employment center was initially in Elliot, then it went to Christie Porter's Jasmine Ivory Campus in Sheridan, and now it's going back up to Elliot, correct?
Yes, it will be with Christ Central.
Christ Central, okay, so they're going to.
Reverend Reggie Johnson.
Yeah, he's amazing, isn't he? I mean, he's like a real go get, he'll do a lot for the community. I mean, he actually is out there like doing stuff with the kids and he and his family are all doing stuff, and the doors are always open there. So I'm glad it's going to go there. But where are the other centers located?
So we have, we have the Y, MCA, and Homewood. We got Brashir Association, Bluefield, Garfield.
Yeah, they've been longstanding, huh?
Carnegie Library acts as one.
You say the Y in.
Oh, you said the Y. And Northside Common Ministries, and they're contracted through Goodwill.
And and there's money to open for each district, is that correct?
We, there are six.
It used to be every district, I thought, was supposed to have one.
Well, there's six Neighborhood Employment Centers, there's nine districts, so some of them are crossover constituencies.
And I really think that we, you increase the salary too, right, or the money for there? Because I feel like, I feel so bad, because people who are working those jobs are not really getting paid really well. And we talk all the time about helping people get jobs to pay them well, so they can live, and we're not paying people well, so that they can live. And so I just, I really wish we could do more in terms of the funding for that. And I know we're tight on the budget, I understand that. But I really wish that we could do something more in that in that regard, maybe it is working with foundations or others. Because we had people, I think there were two people working in the center at one point in Elliot, and, you know, they were part time, but they were really there full time. You know, because those jobs are evenings, weekends, you know, whenever people, you you make yourself available for people that need to help. So I just want to thank you all for your work on it, I absolutely love the centers. I think that they do a great amount of work for the little bit of funding they do have. I wish that we could do something to increase that funding. And I do believe Chief of Staff Wheatley mentioned it before too, about maybe increasing the funding somehow. I thought he, I thought maybe we did, but I can't recall, because it was, you know, a couple years ago now. But thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have three bills, and the first one is for 210,000, the second one is for 210,000, and the third one is for 300,000, not to exceed, so that's around $700,000. And that's the operating costs for the program.
That also, I believe Jim, just back me up on this. Because as I said, Deidre is really the expert on this area and fills me in, and she is unable to be here. That's also the salaries included. First, some of the, you mentioned that earlier in in some of these bills, or no? They're like refunding the salaries, I could be totally wrong, my apologies. Might be, might be something that I get back to you on, Councilwoman Gross.
Sure, no problem, no problem.
Sorry, we're, Chris and I are not the finance people, so.
We can, we can track down that answer. It does appear to me, just doing quick math, that if you with, you know, we're allocating 700, up to 720,000, and that if you are achieving similar numbers to the previous year, that we're spending $3,000 for each person getting a job, which is actually, sounds like a phenomenal return on investment for the city budget. And especially if we are doing it with city personnel, I think it's even better. Right, because we outs, I, my just rule of thumb is we outsource too much. So I love that we're doing it in-house, and I love, you know, that we have the community partners, and we're partnering with the corporate community, but that we've allocated, you know, even though this is a long running program, that it really is producing the kinds of things that we should be investing in. And that's only if I divide 217 into the 720,000. If we use the larger number of nearly 3,000 people that you've touched, right? They maybe didn't land a job this year, but at least it's, they've started on a path. Right, and that we were there for them, in, you know, them getting more information, or trying to find out what their options are, or looking at how they, you know, what resources they can connect to, so, I mean, these these numbers look great to me. So, but it is a really, it is a really important time for people to be able to increase their salaries. So I know Councilwoman Kail Smith mentioned our own employees, but what I feel like a lot of the pressure is for people in the job market now is that they're, they have jobs, but their jobs don't pay enough. So I think it will be, would be interesting to have a briefing to talk about career ladders and how, you know, what this program offers, because clearly, you know, there's more to find out, but not not here at the table. I'm supportive today, and I look forward to learning more. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill, followed by Councilperson Warwick.
I have a second.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So it sounds like you do really good work. There, so of the six locations, we have like, what, one full time employee? Each one, somebody full time on salary at each location, how does that work?
Usually at least one that is supported by the funds that we provide to Neighborhood Employment Centers. But as Chris mentioned before, they're already existing employment and training and workforce development programs within those organizations, so.
So how many people do you have on salary?
Oh, with, in the Neighborhood Employment Centers itself? I, I'm not sure of that. They submit invoices for for costs, line item costs within the budgets and the contracts. So it's hard to tell which
Yeah, sure.
how much is, how many employees in each center?
Understood.
But we can find that out.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to. So so let me ask you this on the operation end, how does it work? So first of all, let me ask you from my district, specifically Carrick. You said Brashir Association, is that in the South Side, right? Okay, that would probably be the closest for young adults in my district, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so it's right down over the hill.
Just outside of Carrick.
Just outside of Carrick, great. Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So what, how's it work? I mean, if I have a young man or woman come to me and say, hey, I'm really looking for a job, anything the city can do, do I just, can they walk in and talk to somebody?
Yeah, they could call, walk in.
So somebody's there if they walk in?
Text them, fax them.
Right.
And let the folks at the Neighborhood Employment Center know what they're looking for, and.
So somebody actually kind of interviews them? Like, what are you looking to do, and starts looking in that field?
Yeah, start kind of apply them with the job readiness skills they may need or lacking. See what's interesting to them, what connections they could use to them. And then, like I said, they work as a network, so they can reach out to the other network of places to see maybe they have opportunities that they might not be connected to, things of that nature.
Is there a backlog of young people looking? It's not just young people, right?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, I shouldn't just say young people, but, yeah, so is there like a backlog? Is it, or is everybody kind of in the books, and somebody's searching for the right opportunity for?
Just from my experience, there there is a backlog.
Yeah.
Folks looking for jobs and waiting for the results of interviews and they're poking around looking for jobs.
Right, so all the locations, there's actually a brick and mortar and a door you can go into and say, I need help finding a job, basically.
Yes.
And somebody's going to get in contact with you, if not that day, because if you only have one person there, I'm sure they're busy. You don't have somebody to cater to, everybody walks in the door, or if somebody takes their name and puts them on the list, is that how?
And there's also employment, or computers at each one of these centers where they can use the computer resources to find jobs.
Okay, that's good. Do you work with the building trades at all? Carpenters?
Some of the employment centers work with building trades. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's it for me, Madam Chair, thanks for the work you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thank you, so I, yeah, this is, I didn't even know we had this, so this is exciting. So I'm very interested in workforce development. Actually, my office sends out a quarterly newsletter, which we're gearing up, which just like brings, there's just so much, right, around workforce development in the city that just kind of brings, so I would love to add that. And I can share that with you, maybe if you want, you know, if you're, people who come in could subscribe, I don't know, that's. And then with this funding, is there, do you, I would be interested in talking more perhaps about bringing, even just as a pilot or a part time thing, like to the Hazelwood Library? Or something like that, if that would?
It's worth considering, sure.
Okay, because I think that that would be, a lot of the young people go to the library to use the computers and stuff, that's sort of the, you know what I mean, where people go to kind of get, yeah, use computers. And I think that would be very helpful. I know that they have, in April, they have tax programs, which are very popular. You know, people coming in to get help with their taxes, so maybe we can talk about that.
Most of the centers bring in other organizations with, to talk about their services that are related to employment, but just like you mentioned with tax, getting their their tax returns prepared and so, and we also had a Neighborhood Employment Center in Hazelwood at one time.
That's what Councilwoman was saying, so, yeah, yeah, maybe we can talk more. But I'll, yeah, if you could send me the, whatever link to your webpage, and I can include that also in the newsletter, so that, you know, as a, just another resource. I'll be sending that out pretty soon.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, of course, thank you, thanks for your work.
Councilman Mosley.
Thank you for being here today, I just had a couple questions, someone who in a past life worked in workforce development, and, you know, we worked together.
Yes.
I think that was almost 20 years ago. Time flies. My first question is, are there particular industries that these Neighborhood Employment Centers see more folks being directed to? You know, in particular, or is it kind of just a wide range of occupations?
It's a wide range, but I would say that the healthcare, hospitals are probably the that sector with the largest number of applicants seeking jobs and activity around the jobs in those areas.
Okay, and and a kind of follow up to my colleague, Councilman Coghill's, I don't know if it was a question or an assertion that you made around the age, is there, you know, you said it's folks of all ages, but do you see a particular age group that's larger? You know, across the applicants, or is it just a wide range, you know, like 18 to 80?
It's a wide range, but I would say most of the, most of the folks visiting these application centers, or Neighborhood Employment Centers are 20 to 40.
Okay. And 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 has there been, you know, any kind of change in activity pre and post pandemic? You know, has the pandemic affected, you know, the the level of activity of applicants and the folks that come in and out? Or is it kind of just stayed kind of similar pre 2020 to now?
During the height of the pandemic, there was, a lot of those centers lost staff and their other funding. And because we do require that the centers have some other kind of financial support, you know, just depend on the city's input there. But it has increased, activity across the boards increased since the pandemic.
Okay, and my next question. Okay, and my next question is, you know, you know, it's good to see that, you know, there is, you know, pipeline, you know, into healthcare being that is obviously one of the larger industries, you know, here in our region. Has there been any, you know, work done already or any thoughts about having those same kind of pipelines, particularly to the tech industry, since it's, you know, been growing so rapidly in our region over the last decade or so?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that there's a emphasis on it, but it is an area that, that they've worked with. I would think that there could be a lot more attention to the tech industry.
And my last question, is there any, you know, particular, you know, areas of opportunity where you feel these neighborhood employment centers could be, you know, have more of an impact, you know, in the community? And, you know, and if so, like what are those, you know, areas of, of opportunity you see for, you know, these centers to have more of an impact, not only in the community, but obviously for our region and for our local economy?
Chris, do you have any thoughts on that one?
Obviously, their impact is what it has been. I think more funding obviously would help, obviously more individuals you got, more resources you got, it's going to get you better results. As of now, I think they all do a good impact, because they also work with our learning programs, with our summer youth employment. They are centers where kids can go and sign up and stuff like that. So they are very versatile in what they do. It would just be having the money to be able to have more opportunities to reach out and host more events and things of those natures.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I know we had one for second round. Any further comments first round? Second round, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I did just want to add that sometimes these, the employees are not our employees, but they're employees of the different organizations, you know, that, that oversee them.
Thanks for clarifying, I was wondering that.
Yes, so sometimes our funding does even go towards employees of that organization. They could use it on a computer lab or whatever the case may be.
Because they all also need supplies.
Yes.
Constantly, they need paper, printing, printers go down, computers, and a lot of them also have laptops and, and computers available for the people when they come in. So I just want to make sure the people, because I have had the opportunity to see firsthand, you know, a lot of what they do. And as I mentioned to Councilwoman Warwick, there was one in Hazelwood, I think it was at the Y, and Aaron Gibson, I think, ran it, but I think he's up in the Y, up in the hill now, and that place closed, but I could see why she would, you know, want a center there because.
Sure.
Yeah, so I wonder if there's a chance that you could do like a roving one for places that don't have them? If there's somebody that could travel or, you know, sort of like our art cart, but an employment cart.
We've thought of that before. It was a little difficult to do, but that's a, that's a good idea, sort of an itinerant.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking someplace where, or something that we can get resources to places that don't typically have them. Maybe even at the, partner with Giant Eagle with their Giant Eagle Mobile and have someplace that's traveling places that are in need, that would obviously be the same somewhere, probably similar areas that need help. Okay, I'm sorry, I won't tell you how to do your job, but you do a great job.
It's a good point, thank you.
No, thank you all for the work you do, I do appreciate it, thank you.
Any further comments? I, I just had one quick question. Thank you for the work that you do. It's, it's a great reminder. I, I often need to be reminded about some, all the different programs that, work that happens in our city. But the quick question is, which Carnegie Library branches this operates out of?
It's the main branch.
The main branch in Oakland, okay.
And they provide a lot, they, they act as a resource to the rest of the neighborhood employment center network.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1293, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1294.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your support.
Bill 1294, resolution providing for the authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments in agreements or agreements with various agencies for job development and employment services necessary to implement the 2024 Neighborhood Employment Program and providing the periodic transfer of funds to be used in the 2024 Neighborhood Employment Program for payment of costs thereof, costs not, not to exceed $210,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1294, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1295.
Bill 1295, resolution providing the authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments in agreements or agreements with various agencies to provide job development and employment services, wages and fringe benefits for supervisors, staff, workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, vocational skills training and on-the-job training, outreach, recruitment costs and administrative expenditures necessary to implement the 2024 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and providing the periodic transfer of funds to be used in the 2024 Pittsburgh Partnership Employee Program and for payment of costs thereof not to exceed $300,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1295, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Wilson.
Deferred Papers, Bill 1042, resolution approving a conditional use application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article V, Chapter 911, Section 911.04, Point A, Point 72, to Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, property owner for utility general use to construct a new pump, pump station at 7853 Lockway East, Parcel 122L50, zoned riverfront industrial mixed-use 11th and 12th wards, Council District Number 7 and 8, or 7 and 9.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 10.
Wait, where are we? Where should we go? Sorry.
I'm not paying attention. Is this the water pump?
This is the Pittsburgh Water, Bill 1042, the, the pump station.
Madam, should we bring the engineers to the table?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Could you just give your name and title for the record?
Yes, Paul Consilla, Principal Planner with the Department of City Planning.
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't think there's any problem with the bill. I just wanted to kind of have into the public record a little bit more details about what is happening at this site, because it kind of combines, there's a bunch of things that will be happening very near to each other, and this is on the borderline of District 7 and District 9 on the Allegheny River. And there's, we know, and we've had previous discussions at the table, that eventually in the coming years, there will be a big dig site where Elka San will be taking easement and doing one of their 150-foot-deep vertical wells with like some, like 30-foot-wide manhole cover. And we also have our own DPW deposit site where there's gravel and things like that. And then there's the pump station. So just kind of help us with the site and what are all the various activities that are happening?
Yeah, so with, with this application, what's happening? There's an existing pump station that has, you know, basically run its, run its course, run its life, and they want to, they're, as a part of their whole kind of capital improvements plan, you know, there's the one, the pump station that's on, you know, the south side of the Allegheny River in the districts that you're talking about. There's also the Aspen Wall Pump Station, which they have a development application for, which is not a part of this resolution. And this one, what they're doing is constructing a new pump station on the site. There, there's a structure, I think it's just sort of like a, kind of like a warehouse structure now, that they're demolishing that to put in a new pump station. And with, you know, tunneling to kind of connect to the system, and that's, that's all that this resolution is for.
And this project for a new pump is providing water, if I'm not mistaken, to about a third of the city. There's a giant water main that comes from the water plant under the Allegheny River to this pump.
Yes.
And then this pump pumps that water up to the reservoirs.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so just again, it's, it's a big project, it's important to the city, and it's, I just find it fascinating the way the infrastructure works, frankly. So, you know, it's really cool that we have a, we are unique in, compared to a lot of cities, in that we have so few pumps, they're very large, because our water system takes advantage of our elevation, pumps the water up high and provides water pressure throughout the city. So just wanted to share, that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 1042? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1042, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, thank you very much. That moves us on to Bill 1284.
Bill 1284, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX, zoning, Article III, overlay zoning districts, Chapter 907, development overlay districts, to amend Section 907.04, IZO, inclusionary housing overlay district, Article 4, planning districts, Chapter 910, downtown districts, to amend Section 910.01, Golden Triangle District, Article 5, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, to amend Section 911.04, use standards, and Article 6, development standards, Chapter 915, environmental performance standards, to amend Section 915.07, performance points system.
She's already reading it.
Motion to approve, long discussion.
Second, Councilman Wilson.
I'm going to defer to the bill sponsor.
Councilperson Charlan.
I think we already read it, so it's fine.
Okay, okay, sorry, we were talking there. So just to recap where we are from last week. So last week, we held this legislation for an opinion from law to make sure that the amendments that we introduced do what they say they were going to do. The opinion from law came back and it did say that the inclusionary zoning districts that currently exist will, will be intact. And while we are discussing this, that the legislation, that, or the, the districts that currently exist will stay, will stay producing, we'll still have the inclusionary zoning laws that were agreed upon with the community from years in the past. So I'm thankful that that is what the opinion said. The bill in front of us right now has three amendments that were introduced last week. They're incorporated into what we are voting on today. I want to thank everyone who's reached out to me so far, and I believe everyone is really engaged with me in, in good faith about this legislation. And, you know, I think it really highlights the fact that this is a very big, of course, someone's calling me right now, but this is a very big change to our zoning code, and it's something that needs to be considered very deliberately and thoughtfully and with everyone at the table. It's not something that we can just rush through and hope we can get passed, you know, in the, in the spring next year. I know that the discussions that I've not been involved with, I'm encouraged to see from conversations with, you know, Director Pollak, meeting with outside groups to talk about this process. And, you know, I, I think that is how this process is supposed to work. I, I had a couple of people reach out to me after last week and say, you know, I'm, wow, like what a, what a long discussion, and I'm sorry you had to go through that. And frankly, like, I, I want that, I want this to be a deliberate process. I don't have any problems with having a, a long discussion about what we're doing with, with affordability and building affordable units and creating housing affordability in this city. I want to highlight again something that came up in public comment, but I also, you know, think it should be noted. I am the only renter on this, on this council, and I think that it is important to note that I should not be the person that has the most skin in the game in building affordable units, because our current inclusionary zoning practice requires the renting class to pay more than businesses or homeowners or people that work in the city. It really relies on the renting class to pay for, for these units here. So I, I don't think that it's fair that me personally, me, you know, Citizen Bob pays more than, than anyone else here, and I, you know, hope that we can develop a program where I am not the, the person with the most skin in the game in, in this process here. So I look for a, a robust discussion around our housing affordability and building affordable units and what we're going to do to make that happen. And, you know, encourage people to continue reaching out. I'm excited to have those conversations. They, you know, they very much excite me, and I think this is how the process is, is supposed to work. So would ask for member support today to send this legislation to the Planning Commission, where we will continue the next step of this, this discussion. And also, I'm sorry, I almost forgot to say this, I want to thank both the, the Chair and the Clerk's Office for all of the work that you've done with all of the, the changes to, to legislation, things that came in last minute, all the printing that had to happen, and looking through the, you know, through the amendments and the text file last night. There was a lot of work that went into this bill on your end, and I really just thank you for all of the work, keeping everything in order, and, you know, God bless you for being able to do that. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm not sure whose hand I saw first, so I'll go to Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilperson Warwick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to the first point, that we held the bill for a week for an opinion from the Law Department that we did receive late on Monday, and it says with a bunch of caveats, that they kind of fingers crossed that the amendments that council voted on last week does what the sponsor intended. I said last week, and I say again, it would have been stronger, I think the suggestion first came from President Lavelle at the table, that the bill should have been numbered differently, meaning that instead of amending the existing chapter, as I reminded everyone, citizens worked on for five years with lots of robust conversation, with lots of people at the table after five years of council and administrative work that started with the Affordable Housing Task Force that involved 90 people over the course of 18 months, that recommended not just the Housing Opportunity Fund, which we did effectuate, but also IZ, Inclusionary Zoning, and that followed up by a very industry-heavy task force of the previous administrations, which stretched out to, from my recollection, nearly 24 months, that was a subcommittee just on inclusionary zoning, that didn't end until sometime, I think in 2018, that there were, so that's years, right, years, there are many years. We finally passed just an overlay for just Lawrenceville in the first version in this, early in 2019. So this discussion stretched, right, and included literally like, like staffed, fully staffed citizen and industry working groups for five years, as well as on top of the community work that was going on with the residents in my district. So that was a very robust discussion that really kind of came to effectuate in just one city neighborhood that I represent, right before the pandemic, actually, right? And so there were only about six months of it being alive and active before we went into 2020. So we, we don't want to lose that protections. The suggestion that we got from our Law Department, which again, we had at the table last week, is that the numbering be changed so that it doesn't amend that overlay, but then creates a, you know, a competing citywide overlay in a different numbering system. And I, I'm disappointed that we don't have that in front of us today. I think that we would all feel better about having that clarity, and we don't have that today. I'd also like to point out that we absolutely should continue to have robust conversations about what various neighborhoods need and markets need, and I think. about, um, what various neighborhoods need and markets need, and I think everyone has been having that conversation against, for nearly ten years. On how to not just work from a narrow set of ideas, but to match those realities, um, to what is happening in the kind of micro-markets inside the city. Um, and to that, to that, in that respect, I'd push back a little bit on some of the public comment that we've gotten, that, um, examples in markets very different from Pittsburgh are somehow relevant, um, to opposing inclusionary zoning citywide, or even opposing, inclusionary zoning into the markets where it's clearly working, um, in the city. That is equally not constructive. You can't have it both ways. You can't say that we need to look at different neighborhoods differently in Pittsburgh, but then also some example from another city just applies writ large. It does not. So, and we, we acknowledged also at this council, again, for ten years, that this is not the solution to everything. Neither putting inclusionary zoning in place is not the answer. It's not, shouldn't be our only tool in the toolbox, is what we kept saying for ten years. It is not the only tool in the toolbox to provide affordability in the city. Certainly, the administration is doing many, many other things, and this council is working on many other kinds of tools for different markets and for different kinds of, um, citizens and different needs, whether that's senior housing, or it's deeply affordable housing, or it's, um, uh, first-time homebuyers, um, et cetera. So, there's, there, this is one tool in the toolbox. So, also, by the same token, just fighting at doesn't fix affordability in the city. And there are many tools that we need to, to move forward. So, I'm not in support of sending this to the Planning Commission. I wasn't last week, I'm not this week. I feel like this bill is still so, has so many internal contradictions, um, that I, I cannot support sending it to the Planning Commission and kind of wasting more, um, energy on it. There are ideas that we absolutely should be exploring, but this language, um, is, it's got too many internal flaws. So, I'll be voting no today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so, uh, just echo a little bit, um, um, on this bill, and I know we talked extensively last week. Councilman Wilson doesn't like when my mean girl comes out, so I'll try and be a little nicer this time in my town. I don't know. I really don't like this bill. So, yeah, so this bill is, um, a political stunt intended to slow down the passing of IZ, right? That is clear. It's been discussed among council members. There is no question that that is what this is. It is not a bill that was written, um, in deliberation with anybody, uh, except maybe a few people. But before we get, and, and law did say quite clearly that, as Councilwoman Gross just said, that a separate section not, you know, that is not a, an amendment to the existing IZ overlay would be better, and, and otherwise, it just creates confusion. So, there's that. So, you know, the law clearly says that this is not a good bill, and we should have something different, and at any rate. But before I get into, um, the bill itself, I do want to address, like, some of the speakers, sort of this overall YIMBY movement, uh, that we're seeing here growing rapidly here in Pittsburgh. And this is not, and I don't, I don't want this to necessarily be a knock on the membership themselves, because I think that, um, you know, you have movements with ideas and, and, and we sort of hear something over and over and over again, and these talking points kind of get ingrained. But it seems to me that this movement does not actually care about deeply affordable housing, which is the housing that we need here in Pittsburgh, right? That's what our Housing Needs Assessment clearly says. If it did care about deeply affordable housing, then there would be somebody in the movement who is a member of the poor and working class who are struggling so hard to pay rent in this city. But that, that's just not, not what we're seeing in this movement, and it's something I've talked numerous times with leadership about engaging with people in the communities who have been doing affordable housing work for so long, and that, that just doesn't seem to be happening. I don't know if it's intentional, or if it's just a sort of, we'd rather be right than get something done mentality, I don't know. But, um, it feels disingenuous to use the language of, uh, racism and segregation and, you know, the, the history of our zoning code, um, but then not to work with the people who those policies actually have impacted over generations in our city. Even this term, quote, renter class, which has been invented again by the YIMBY movement, this is a new term, the renter class, which includes Councilman Charland or Citizen Bob, as he's referred to himself, who's the only member of the renter class at the table. Citizen Bob earns eighty-five, eighty-seven thousand dollars a year, just like everybody else at this table. He could easily buy or rent a home in Pittsburgh, although not necessarily in a luxury building in a hot neighborhood like the Strip or Lawrenceville, right? But the question is, do we need a subsidy to allow folks like Bob or myself or any other person making that salary? Do we need a taxpayer-funded subsidy to enable those people to rent at those very high rents, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, whatever, a month? I think we don't. Also, I want to address this totally disingenuous argument that the city should, quote, pay for IZ when the city is already investing millions of taxpayer dollars in affordable housing, millions of taxpayer dollars, and when developers have and have always had access to the ample HUD funding through vouchers, whether that be project-based vouchers or tenant vouchers, and they simply don't want to use them. Why? Because when you build a luxury building in a hot neighborhood, it doesn't like vibe with the feeling you want to have poor people living in that building. And that is why we don't see developers already taking advantage of the ample government funding that is already there to provide affordable housing. I think it's also interesting that the Pro Housing study, which I, I will admit, I have not gone through, I, I'm, I'm hearing from folks that there's some issues with the data, um, but that it seems to focus on the number of units, but not actually on the rents and the cost of living in those neighborhoods. And again, anecdotally, there's nothing I can see that shows that it is any cheaper to live in the South Side or the Strip District or Oakland or in market rate, you know, than, than it ever was. If anything, it's getting more and more expensive. So, I would, I'd be interested to see that piece of the puzzle included in the data. Like, what is the rent? Because if the rent is still high, then poor people still can't afford to live there. Anyway, so back to this bill. So, in this bill, just to be clear, it sets affordability at a level to serve the wealthier, wealthiest renters rather than the poorest renters, and the, the affordable housing we need is for our poorest renters. It allows developers, instead of providing those units in their, in, in the buildings that they're building, it, it allows them to put them farther away, right? Which is how we've typically done affordable housing in Pittsburgh, thus further segregating, right? Saying, well, you don't have to have the poor people in your building or the lower-income people in your building, you can just build the housing for them a little farther away. And then third, it allows them, and there are other issues, but you know, the, you know, third, it allows them to pay a fee, um, to just not do it, right? Just pay a fee, and a fee that is so, that is certainly not enough to actually go and build housing somewhere, right? Just pay a fee, pay your way out, and, you know, and that's how, that's how we do it in the United States with so many things. You know, stuff isn't working, so we allow the wealthy to not have to actually, you know, deal with those problems by just paying a fee and, 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 you know. At any rate, um, you know, at the end of the day, Pittsburgh is one of the most segregated cities in the United States, and, and that is really exasperated, um, or exacerbated, excuse me, by, um, our geography, right? By just, we have highways cutting through neighborhoods, we have hills, we have, you know, so it makes it hard. We're a pretty small city, but it makes it hard to get from here to there. And, you know, I can just give in my district alone, right? You, you have Squirrel Hill, which is one of the wealthiest, most prosperous neighborhoods in the city, and then you have Glen Hazel, where we have some of our poorest residents. And, um, it's incredibly difficult to get between the two. And my feeling is that our goal should be, in creating an inclusionary zoning plan that actually works, our goal should not just be deeply affordable housing anywhere, it should be affordable housing in our high amenity neighborhoods. That means when a building goes up in a neighborhood that has great transit and, you know, grocery stores and good schools and jobs and, you know, even restaurants and, and, you know, other fun things to do, that that building should also have people living in it who are, who are not just rich, right? That we're not just building luxury housing for the rich in the hot neighborhoods, but we are actually have a plan that creates deeply affordable housing in those neighborhoods, in those buildings, using the ample government funding that is already out there to do so. Councilman Charland's bill does not do that. It also creates, I think, chaos and confusion, one of the speakers said, who is, you know, literally in the middle of it right now in Oakland, in an overlay district, um, working as a, in a, you know, a community development group. Again, I would say that we should stop wasting additional time on this. You know, if the, if the desire is there for council to create a separate, but, you know, a different bill that isn't the mayor's bill, or, you know, if we, that is sort of, right, we can do that. But I think that what we really need to do is sit down and be having a serious conversation, and this bill is not serious. This is just obstructionist and, um, really just, you know, a waste of everyone's time. So, I don't know why we're sending it to the Planning Commission when we know it's going to get a negative recommendation, and then it's going to come back and need seven votes and blah, blah, blah. Why don't we just not do this one and sit down and actually take the time and effort and bring all of the people together, not just a few guys from Pro Housing and their ideas, right, but people from a, a, across the spectrum of housing, whether that be developers, um, affordable housing, and people who develop affordable housing, people who develop market rate housing, people who advocate for tenants, for low-income tenants, and bring all these people together and have a, a robust discussion about the inclusionary zoning that we need. But instead, this bill just blocks that conversation, and to me, that is why our YIMBY friends are so excited about it, because it just, in the end of the day, this isn't inclusionary zoning, it's just something that's sort of, it has inclusionary zoning on the name, but it's, it's just sort of more of the same, right? Just sort of, just building market rate at the end of the day, um, and, uh, not actually doing what we needed to do. So, yeah, I'm obviously a no for sending it to Planning Commission, and, um, I really, really encourage my colleagues to, um, to vote the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I, I actually just think we should send it to the Planning Commission. I don't think we need to belabor the conversation. I think we're going to continue to hear the same stories that we've been hearing. In the end, when it comes back, we're going to then place whatever vote we really want at the time. I think some will vote to send it to Planning and won't vote to support it when it comes back, either way. So, I just think that we should just call the vote. Do you have a motion? And can I also say, I'm, I'm going to add a couple more things. I mean, I, I can go on and on and on, but I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the conversation, because I think that we obviously feel differently about what we're doing here. I think we've spent tons of money, as, as Councilwoman Warwick mentioned, on affordable housing. We don't have a lot of affordable housing built, um, so I, I, I do, I don't think we're building as much as we need, obviously, that's why everybody keeps coming down and talking about it. I do know we've built it in my district, even though we don't need anymore, we have an overabundance, um, according to what a lot of people have, you know, all the studies that have said. But I, I, I think that when you're talking about having conversations, there were no conversations here in the beginning with some of us about the inclusionary zoning in the first place. So, the fact that there has not been conversation is part of the problem, but this is just adding another part of the conversation to it. And I really think that what we need to do today is send it, quit going back and forth, let the Planning Commission come back with whatever they're going to say, um, although, you know, I'm, I'm tainted with some of the things they say at this point because, um, or jaded, I should say, with, with some of their opinions, because we were told that we were out of compliance with the Fair Housing, and we were not. So, I mean, now I'm going to be concerned about whatever comes back. Regardless, I think that's a conversation we have to have, um, at that time, when we get both pieces back. So, that's it. Do you have a motion to?
Thank you. So, well, I have, I have, I, I understand that there's a desire to call a question, but there's not actually been a, a call. So, I'm going to keep the, for round one open for any additional comments. Seeing none, all those in? The motion is to approve, that's what I'm calling right now. I see no further comment. Any further comments?
It has to be sent to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Would someone like to call for sending this to Planning Commission?
Motion to, uh?
Send to Planning Commission for report.
Hold for a report from Planning Commission, is that what the?
For report and recommendation.
Yes, yep.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in? Roll call. Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
No.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
Aye.
Six ayes, three noes. Thank you. Bill will be sent to Planning Commission for report and recommendation. That moves us to new papers, Bill 1303.
Bill 1303, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code Article One Introduction and Establishment, Section 902.03 Zoning Map to rezone parcels bounded by Neville Street, Forbes Avenue, South Bellfield Avenue, and Vigilow Boulevard in the North Oakland Neighborhood from multi-unit residential moderate and very high density Oakland Public Realm Sub-District B, specially planned District Seven, urban industrial and hillside to urban center employment and urban center mixed use in the North Oakland Neighborhood.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Discussion. I know that we'll be holding a public hearing on this, and there'll be further discussion, but wanted to, um, remind those who are not, um, um, who, whose districts do not include the Oakland neighborhoods, that this is an extension and a, the rezoning portion of the Oakland Plan that took about two years of community deliberation process, and that this is the kind of rezoning of one portion of the neighborhood for future, um, future growth in, in just the north, north, northern neighborhoods of, of Oakland. So, um, a lot of work has gone into the entire plan and this portion of the plan, and I'm grateful to Christian Umback and our planning staff for their work on this. So, those in favor of, um, holding Bill 1303 for a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, abstained? Bill be held for a public hearing. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
New papers, Bill 1296, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of AMCOM in the amount of sixty-one thousand, one hundred, three dollars and forty-two cents to pay the remaining balance owed to this vendor for the lease of multifunction devices and managed print services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1296, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, affirmative recommendation, Bill 1297.
Bill 1297, resolution amending Resolution 320 of 2024- Bill 1297, resolution amending Resolution 320 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Monday.com, an online project management and portfolio management tool for use with multiple city departments by increasing the approved amount by $79,200 for an amended total cost not to exceed $323,200 over four years.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. Councilperson Charland.
Very briefly, our office takes full advantage of Monday. This has been a game-changing software for my office and constituent services. Since I was a staffer, it has always been a problem for us to figure out how to store things effectively, you know, through Google Docs and other software we use. Monday, I cannot speak highly enough about this software, and I'm just really thankful we're, we're continuing this for the, for the next four years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1297, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1298.
Bill 1298, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of U.S. Ignite in the amount of $30,000 for annual dues for U.S. Ignite Communities, membership only.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I actually have a question about this, if you wouldn't mind joining us I realize that we're at the end of a meeting, we're at the end of the year. We've had long discussions these last few weeks, but, and it, that it's only $30,000. But I, I was curious about Ignite. I looked it up. It looks like it's technical assistance and capacity building services for smart and connected communities. But if you could introduce yourself and then tell us a little bit more about what we'll be utilizing with this contract, or this warrant, I guess.
Good afternoon. Heidi Norman, Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. And I have with me Andrew Hayhurst, Senior Manager of Innovation in the department. So U.S. Ignite is a nonprofit organization that supports cities across the country in, you know, in applying for grants and analyzing the effectiveness of various smart cities applications and projects. Andrew can tell you about the types of things they've been doing so far to help support us as we apply for money to promote innovation in the city.
Yeah, Andrew Hayhurst, Senior Manager of Innovation. They really help us in two ways. One is with our grant application, as Heidi said. There's three grants they've supported us with. Two were still potentially in the running for. So they helped us with the Toyota Mobility Fund, and really helped strategize about how we would submit and like what our application was. They helped with the U.S. DOT Smart Grant application, which was about extending Smart Spines into downtown. And then they helped us with the Bezos Earth Fund, which was about building a digital twin platform that we'd be able to extend throughout the city. We're still in the running for the Smart Grant and DOT, I'm sorry, Smart Grant and the Bezos Earth Fund. So they, they provide consulting, strategy services for all of those. They also really do a great job of convening us with leaders in other cities. So, for example, Long Beach has one of the best, like, innovation programs out there, and they have helped connect us and are really, like, at the forefront of making sure, like, as we think about reinventing PGH Lab, helping us meet with those leaders that are already doing things out there. And so they, I think they've been really beneficial, and thank you.
So you feel it's a value add for the money we're paying?
Yeah, I can, I can say there's, they're really interested in a lot of the work we're doing around digital equity and other things, and they have helped other cities procure funding from numerous sources. One example was $30 million across eight cities from direct congressional spending. So they, they have, they have their tentacles throughout government and can really help, kind of, help us find creative ways to fund some of these projects.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1298, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Same to you.
That brings us to the end of our standing committee's agenda. We have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold cablecast public hearing for Bill 1181 as it relates to a petition for the Stan Avenue bike lanes. Speaker registration will close, speaker registration is already closed. Next week, council will hold a regular meeting and standing committees meeting on Monday, December 23 at 10:00 AM and 1:30 PM respectively. Wednesday, December 25, city council and the clerk's office will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday and Hanukkah holiday. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadlines. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything from members? Councilperson Charland.
You know, I almost forgot to do this. I wanted to call for a post-agenda on the controllers' most recent audit of our tax abatement programs.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. We will hold a post-agenda. It will be scheduled. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. And I forgot yesterday to also call for a post-agenda on human trafficking in the Pittsburgh area for the month of January. I want, I want the post-agenda to be in January. It's, that's human trafficking month.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Aye. Post-agenda will be scheduled. Anything else from members? I want to thank you all for, well, I guess we'll be speaking next week before the holidays. So, an early, happy holidays to anyone who might be tuning in, who's not tuning in next Monday. And can I get a motion to approve the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Does that move? Second.
Those in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Councilwoman.